All right, I'm gonna call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to board. And this time I'd like to call upon Mayor Proten to lay out and lead us in an invitation.
Let us pray. How many followers, as we go through this holy season celebrating the birth of Jesus, we also observe the birth of a new year. We ask for your blessings on our city, state, and nation, always observing that we seek you for guidance. For it is in God we trust. May we have a prosperous 2015, and may you allow us to have a blessed meeting. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
This time I'd like to ask Eagle Scout Jeffrey Givada and a couple of members of his crew to work on their citizenship and the community merit badge to come forward and introduce yourselves or lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I am Modestoli Abers. I am 12 years old.
I'm Satehawa Garcia. I'm 17 years old.
I'm Jeffrey Givada, and I'm just here with these guys to watch over them. I'm 18 years old.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Welcome, Grand.
Will you please join me in the Texas pledge?
Okay, now they're testing us.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and under as well.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. We're glad to have you here. Happy New Year. Had a great year last year, our city event. Start out again with a great year this year. And to kind of remind us of that, we'll go to item one, public announcement of events. And Dave, Ralph, can you tell us what's happening in our community in the way of public events?
Happy New Year, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager, and City Secretary, and City Attorney. We've got a few reminders for you and the public about our upcoming events here to kick off 2015. One of the big ones, which seems to be a nice potpourri of entertainment, is Downtown Harlingen will host Jammin' on Jackson Street with bands Greek and friends. And apparently friends includes folk, country, gospel, bluegrass, a wide range of entertainment. Musicians are welcome to bring their instruments, whether it's individuals or groups. That's at the Railroad Crossing Model Railroad Club and Event Center at 102 East Jackson. The showtimes are at 10:30 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. This month it'll be January 8th and January 22nd, and that'll be going through March 26th. Downtown Harlingen's also hosting a series of walking tours on Saturdays. And I've learned to read the fine print at the bottom. That's not on the first Saturday of each month, which is market days. So any other Saturday now for a few weeks through March 28th, again, there are free walking tours downtown. It's a wide variety of history and some of the more up-to-date things in the downtown area. So be sure to bring some comfortable walking clothes, probably some warm clothes for a few Saturdays here, and comfortable walking shoes. The tours only take about 90 minutes, and they are free. They cover a nice variety of things in our community. Another one I'm gonna mention is Monday on January 19th, we've got the Big Winter Texan Appreciation Day coming up at Casa de Amistad. I've got about three pages of things that are going on here, but I'll make it kind of short. It's 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There's gonna be a lot of live music there, whether it's mariachi or western. They're gonna have a classic car show, a motorcycle show, Mexican handicrafts. There's free souvenir t-shirts for the first 2,000 winter Texans that show up. And they're also gonna be amongst all the different things you can register to win. There's two certificates to be given away by Value Place Motel for free stays, a one-week stay for each winner at the hotel. So that's gonna be really neato. The list of entertainment keeps growing, which is why I've got so many sheets. But please check out www.myharlingen.us, because there's details, or check at the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Another one that, and I just, as soon as I saw this, I thought that was me on the far-right. I used to have just about that much hair years ago, so it started a little flashback. But the Beatles, not real Beatles, Beatlemania is coming for the 50th anniversary, the Liverpool Legends. So that'll be a fantastic occasion. I may actually get a little toupee or wear something, do the twist for a while, I don't know. But that'll be January 23rd. Tickets are available. Should be a fantastic retro event. Also, we've got coming up in February, it's going back to two days, for the 25th Annual Jalapeno 100. There'll be five different bike routes on Saturday. And then on Sunday, there'll be the 5K and 10K run part of the event on February 22nd. You can register online there at yellowcheetah.com or www.jalapeno100.com. And we always mention that Harlingen Boys and Girls Club is the primary beneficiary of the proceeds from that event. So that is a real good community together this time, and if you're gonna get physically fit to start a new year, there'll be your first big test. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dave. Item two is the neighborhood clean and sweep, no? Saturday, December 13th, 2014, 7th Street, 11th Street, Washington, downtown.
Yes, so this is happened in Commission and District Two, which is Commission Uhorn District, and you will see him in one of the pictures here. Just, we do this every month, and this one was having, like, the mayor said, December the 13th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon, and you see some of the volunteers cleaning up the area. They removed approximately one ton of debris from the area. They also removed 25 tires from the area. You see some of the pictures from the volunteers helping out. You see Commissioner there, you're gonna see what I'm saying. There's actually another picture where he comes out. So we certainly wanna thank all the volunteers, including Commission Uhorn, for being out there and supporting the cleanup of the area. We do wanna remind everybody else, we have another cleanup coming up this Saturday, and this is gonna be for the One of Vista and Barzilona Street, from North Commerce to the dead end of the street. Just, if anybody wants to volunteer, whooping the area.
Cold and wet, but... All right, those are great events, and we appreciate that. Appreciate Commissioner Uhorn going out there, helping the crew.
I'd like to have some oversight on editing those pictures.
I hope they showed your best side.
That's what I'm saying.
Item three, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of December the 8th, 2014, and the regular meeting of December 17th today. Are there any additions or corrections? There are no additions or corrections, so they're motioned to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Supposedly, signed, motion carries. Senate agenda, I don't get the orders, or most of the Senate agenda. Is there a second?
Seconds.
All in favor, say aye. Supposedly, signed, motion carries. Item 10, discussion regarding bids received on the following properties from a tax-free sale conducted on July 7th, 2014. Lot 15 of Cool Park, addition to the city Harlingen. B, north 67 and 1/2 feet of block 1 and 2, block 1, south side addition. C, east 1/2 of block 5, block 2, original townsite. D, lot 20, block 1, Charleston addition. And E, 0.025 acre, more or less situated, lot 9, block 36 of the original townsite. Mr. Givada, welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for bringing your scouts along.
Sure, sure. Good example, thank you, appreciate that. Members of the Commission and/or Council, and also members of the community, Mr. Mayor, before you have five properties that were put up for resale, that are resale conducted in July. If you recall, in the past, we've come to you about properties that have been put up for resale, or private offers have been tendered. Whenever we file a lawsuit, you know, we try to work with the taxpayer. If we cannot come to some agreement, or payment agreement, or payment agreement is breached, then we have to go on to judgment. If we do take a judgment, then we put it up for sale soon after the judgment. If the sale is successful, then the city, the county, school district are paid, and that's the end of that. If we don't get a bid on property, that property is then struck off to Cameron County, the city of Harlingen, and the school district. And you all are trustees for each other until that property is resold. And so periodically, this past year, we had two resales, one in July and then another one in November. Typically, we only have one, but if we get a sufficient inventory, then we'll go ahead and have a second resale. This resale was from July. The opening bid are the taxes that are owed, what you're owed, the county's owed, and what the school district is owed. If we don't get that bid, we will take offers from the floor, and we'll accept those offers subject to your approval, the school district's approval, and the county's approval. If any one of the entities rejects that bid, then the bid is dead. It goes back into inventory, and we wait until there's a sufficient inventory to put it up for sale again. So these five properties have been offered, have been put up for sale at least twice, and we're bringing bids to you. If you recall in the past, we had gone from about 25 cents on the dollar to about 33 cents on the dollar, where you're getting, you know, offers on property. These five, you're getting about 70 cents on the dollar. So it's a pretty good deal. It gets the property back on the tax roll. Appraisal District goes back out there and reappraises it, and so it's producing. During the time that you are trustees to the county and the school district, you're the owner, so it is exempt. It is not incurring any new taxes, so it is just dead property until we can get it back on the rolls. So here's an opportunity. We're bringing forward these offers that were taken at a public sale. The school district has already approved the offers. The county has already approved the offers, and so now we just need yours.
I have one quick question. I noticed that South Texas ISD is not listed, even though there are taxing entity on some of those. Can you explain that, how they don't get?
There are actually a taxing entity on all of them, but in Cameron County, they're collected by Cameron County, so they're in the county.
County numbers?
Yes. So it would be the county, and then maybe a couple of special service districts, but it's all in the county amount.
Okay.
The action item is the action item, but if there are any questions, feel free to answer them now.
You said it was 70 percent, that's an average, right?
Yes, it's an average. Actually, on one of them, I think you're getting a little bit above what you were owed. All the others are pretty close, except for one, but...
Combined, it's about 78 percent.
Yeah, 78 percent.
Yeah, I mean, that's great. I think that's a very good return on these properties.
These properties had multiple years owed on them. Some of them are vacant lots, at least two of them are vacant lots. There's a lot of brush going over, so you all, the city has been out there trying to maintain that, so it's good to try to get these on the roll again also. All of them are within the original townsite area also.
And are any of these gonna be subject to the, I forgot what it's called, but there's a period there between the sale and when somebody that is original owns, come back and reclaim it?
There is, it's called a right of redemption, I think is what you're referring to.
Yes.
There's a right of redemption generally for two years on a homestead property. There are exceptions to the rule, but in general, the right of redemption for a homestead property is two years, all of the property is six months.
Okay. So this should be producing here very quickly, once that?
Yes, because that time period's already run.
That's what I'm asking, that time period has run.
Right, because these are resales. They were, the clock started ticking when the first deed, when you got the deed, in your name as trustee, that's when the time started ticking.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? Then we'll go on to item six, is to consider and take action to approve resolutions for the bids received with the tax resale conducted on July 2nd, 2014, for the purpose properties. And there is a resolution for each of them of the properties at the prices described. So is there a motion to approve the resolutions?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion or any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item seven, consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading, creating three new positions at the rank of Lieutenant in the Harlingen Fire Department.
Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. We come before you with a request to change and modify the ordinance, staffing ordinance for the Fire Department to reflect an increase of three promotions to Lieutenant for the Harlingen Fire Department that has been budgeted for this year, 2014, 2015. When you approve, we can continue to move forward. Staff recommends.
You wanna read the caption?
In ordinance, the city of Harlingen, Texas created three new positions at the rank of Lieutenant in the Harlingen Fire Department, appealing prior conflicting ordinance providing severability, providing an effective day for dealing other matters related to foregoing.
I do have a question.
Yep.
I noticed on, we have the captain of the ordinance, and in the body, it talks about three positions and 31 lieutenants, but I noticed in section four, it shows that for two deputy chiefs, that's not mentioned. Shows one current and two budgeted as amended.
That has already come before you. When we increased the strengths and the deputy chief ranks, we brought this ordinance change to you prior to us creating that rank, and you approved it as such.
So the current is already two instead of one?
That's correct.
So this needs to be corrected here?
I, it shows budgeted slots, two of them, two budgeted positions.
I just, I'm looking at the current budgeted slots. That means you only have one fiddle?
But just, the current budgeted slots for, was two when the original ordinance came in, and we changed it to two. So we reflect two current budgeted positions at the moment.
We could correct that on the second reading, correct?
You follow what I'm saying, right? Yes.
You're seeing that there might be the change from two to one here.
On our paperwork, it shows that current is only one, and you're moving it to two, when it should actually reflect two and two.
You're correct. There's two that are already currently budgeted. We would make the change.
I just wanna correct that, that way it looks correct.
Just to correct that for the second reading.
And for the benefit of the public, could you explain why you're doing this?
The what now?
For the benefit of the public, could you please explain why you're doing this?
The three lieutenant positions would be assignment to the tower, what we would consider our aerial ladder tower. At the present time, we only have one driver assigned to that engine company or tower, and it is, it reduces the liability for us by having that officer onboard, instead of having one, just one driver assigned to the unit. In the event that they have to respond in emergency mode, it creates another set of ayes, if I may, for the purpose of benefit of reducing liability in the event that they have to respond in emergency mode.
Okay, and the increases are already budgeted, is that right?
That's correct.
And the budget that we adopted already, so I don't have to budget that.
Is that ready to reflect in the budget?
That's correct. It would not, also, Mayor, if I may, it does not increase the staffing level at the bottom. We're absorbing the position increase in-house, if I may, which, the only thing that reflects on our budget would be the increase of gap between the promotions or between the ranks. So we would not be needing to hire firefighters, we're absorbing those in-house.
So we have 107 slots budgeted, but the new budgeted slots, as amended, add up to 111, right?
110.
110?
I'm correct.
I think I'm off, but anyway, on this, on our paper, they are the ordinance, they add up to 111.
That would be, I think, the change on the one that we talked about earlier, that would need to be on the second reading, we would need to change.
Correct. It'll bring it up to 111.
That's correct.
Because you're hitting 110 because of the...
That's correct. So you're correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the order, or ordinance on first reading?
So moved.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. Supposedly, like, sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 8, consider and take action to accept additional gift, or conditional gift deeds for vacant properties from the Lower River Valley Development Council requiring through Route 2 disaster recovery housing program.
Good evening. As I explained in your executive summary, the Lower River Valley Development Council is a recipient of lots based on the program, one of the programs that the state had, whereas if in Harlingen, a family's home received damage, they had an opportunity to move to an area that had higher opportunities. In that instance, the home had to be demolished, and then the title went to the Lower River Valley Development Council, in which they don't wanna own lots all over the Rio Grande Valley, so they're giving us an opportunity, and those lots, they will then deed to the city of Harlingen, and then we would ensure that either an affordable housing unit or an eligible activity were on that lot for the next five years. Staff recommend approval.
How many lots are we talking here?
At this time, there's just the one, and I sent an email asking, there haven't been any other identified yet, but there are some in the pipeline. So there may be an opportunity for additional lots.
I thought there were two properties.
I think that's...
That's on the next item.
I started thinking the same way at the time.
That's the next item.
There are actually a number of properties, number of houses that have been built through this program in Harlingen.
Correct. They, one of the problems was it was on the same lot, which they would demolish and reconstruct. This one, they were able to go to another area and purchase like an existing home, or purchase a lot and have a new home built on that lot, and where this home had demolished.
I don't know how many total the disaster recovery funds have provided funding for Harlingen, but it's...
I don't know, overall, it was about 800 through the three county area, so...
Yeah, but in Harlingen proper, it seems like it's close to 20 or 25.
Maybe a little bit more.
More than that.
Not enough, but still.
Not enough, but still, let's go for those. All right, is there a...
And on this item, this is a, we're not paying anything for it, they're giving it to us as a gift under the conditions that we use it the way that they decide.
Right, and of course, we would have to maintain it until we used it for something. That's it.
One of them's just right over here, just right over...
This is a nice lot.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the additional gift deeds?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposedly, like, sign, motion carries. Item 9, consider and take action to authorize the city manager to extend a letter of offer on property, actual proposer, self-employed, Cameron County as trustee.
This is the property where there are two lots that have been vacant for many years, and we would like to, as a city manager, we have an opportunity, put in an offer. We would submit it to John Givada, and then he would take it to the other taxing entities to see whether they accepted it. Before we do that, we would need to have your approval to do that on these two lots. The first one is on the corner of Finley and Lozano, and the second one is 1014 North D. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The funding comes from?
It would come from the General Fund.
General Fund, okay.
It's an opportunity to put these properties back into the tax valuation process. The one at the intersection of Finley and Lozano was foreclosed back in 2008, and taxes have not been, have not been, have not been collected since 1988. We're proposing to submit an offer of 1,500. And on the other one, which is on 1014 North D Street, we were asking authorization from the commission to submit an offer of $1,000, and this would allow us to have additional property available to partner with Habitat for Humanity for the construction of affordable housing for low, moderate income families in our community.
I was just curious if it was coming through the CDBG funds, but we're actually working through you all, but the funds come through us.
All right, is there a motion to authorize the city to extend a letter of offer?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposedly, like, sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 10, consider and take action to accept, thank you, Danny, consider and take action to accept the bids for work contract for the TA and IP sidewalk improvements project, bid number 2015-04.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioner, City Manager. As approved by the one-year action plan for the city Harlingen CDBG block grant, the city Harlingen solicited bids for sidewalk improvements within Sense and Strike 110, block group 1 and 2. The improvements are for approximately 1,300 feet of sidewalk, five-foot wide sidewalk, including wheelchair ramps. The limits of the project are on J Street from right to Buchanan Avenue. 25 companies were notified of the bid, 10 companies and three planned rooms picked up requested bid packets. Two companies submitted sealed bids. Diamond Eight Industries was the lowest responsible bidder. After thorough review of the bids and reference checks, engineering and CDBG staff recommends that we award the project to the lowest responsible bidder, Diamond Eight Industries, in the amount of $48,801.
Is there a motion to accept the bid for work contract for disaster regulation?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposedly, like, sign, motion carries. Item 11, board appointments.
11.
No board appointments. Item 12, is executive session, following items pursuant to Section 51, Subchapter D, DCA, Texas Government Code, Section 51, 1.072, regarding the purpose of staying leased for value of real property, and the attorney consultation pursuant to Section 51, 1.0712, Texas Government Code, by legal advice, counsel, connection with the city's rights, fees, privileges, obligations, related pending collective bargaining process pursuant to Chapter 1.74. Regardless, Fire Department, sir, a motion going to executive session.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're in executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, the city commission's gonna go into the private room to talk to their lawyer, and there is an action item, item 13, that we're likely to take action on when we come out. We're out of executive session at 6:21, and the next item is item 13, consideration and appropriate action to approve a collective bargaining labor agreement between the city of Harlingen and the Harlingen Professional Firefighters Association, IAFF, Local 3404, HBFFA, IAFF, Local 3404, duly recognized majority bargaining, fiscal years 2014 through 15 through 2015, 16, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Is there a motion to approve the collective bargaining labor agreement?
So moved, Mayor. Second.
Any discussion? Just remind us of the primary points, the...
It's a two-year agreement, it's a 3% increase the first year, and a 2% increase the second year, and we have additional increases.
Two and two.
Two and two. Two and two, I'm sorry, 2%, I'm getting the police department. It's 2% the first year, 2% the second year, and we have additional incentives worked in the agreement for the firemen.
Very similar to what, in terms of dollar amount, what was agreed to with the police union, the monies are distributed a little bit differently.
Yes, sir.
And that's the way the firefighters wanted it, so...
And we do have, the fire union has a border, and they have approved the agreement.
Right, and so this will finalize the agreement if the city commission approves it. So we have a motion, and we have a second. All, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposedly, like, sign, motion carries. Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Go back to board appointments, and I have two, I have two appointments to the Civil Service Commission. I appoint Ryan Dooman, who works for the Department of Homeland Security and ICE, and Chuck Mattingly, who's Assistant District Attorney of Willacy County, and who also served in our police chief search committee to the Civil Service Commission. Is there a motion to approve board appointments?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 14, citizen communication. Very good, then. We're adjourned. Thank you. I see you.
Happy New Year to you.